Please stand and join me at the front.
The agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call the meeting on a order. And with the consent agenda, we are going to remove item 1C from the discussion today. It will be placed back on the agenda next week, is my understanding.
Thanks for some.
There was one piece of information they were waiting for.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, last one C.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, first up, Jamie Peterson, Coordinator, GIS, and Chris Nelson, Analyst to GIS. Update from GIS regarding Chris Nelson obtaining his professional certification and geograph- geographic information systems professional, and you have a new designation after your name, GISP.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take some time to highlight what I think is a significant professional, personal achievement. I know it personally, how challenging it is and how much dedication it takes to get to that point. I want to highlight some of the things that a person must do to go through that, to get that standard. There are three components to the portfolio that a person has to submit to the review board. Educational achievement, contributions to profession, and professional experience points. The educational achievements, that's pretty self-explanatory upfront, right? That's college courses, accredited coursework, non-accredited coursework such as webinars. You earn, they are on a point system. One hour might be a point in some accredited courses. One hour might be half a point in a webinar or an online training session. And of course, along with that is college education, coursework. All of those things, in summary, lead up to a person being able to check that box off on the requirements list. So that's a minimum of four, four years' experience. And on top of that, that, just in the education part of it. So there's a lot of things that go into that part. Contributions to professions, publications, research, conference participation, conference presenting, being involved in committees, being involved in professional other, like associations, like we have our ISAC associations, there's a Geographic Information Council in Iowa, there's a GISLIS in Nebraska, which Chris was a Nebraska Sarpy County GIS for a long time. So you're continually earning these points throughout your career, and it really does take a long time to get there. And the professional experience are tiered by your position. So what level of work you're doing also dictates how many points you earn in those categories. So as you, you know, grow throughout your career, you're really starting off slow. You know, you're earning points at a very low increment. But as you grow and give more responsibilities, those points accumulate a little bit faster. Chris has a ton of experience in that category. And on top of that, he had to take a test. So it's something that you, you're not allowed to just walk the talk. You got to walk the walk too with that. And it was a hard test. It was not something easy. The, the practice exam was a difficult exam. And I went through those, you know, worked through that with Chris, pushed him to get this. He did not have it when he came here. This is, he just started his third year, upper third. And so I think there was a little bit between both of us that pursuing that would be in his best interest. And the county provides a good environment for a person to succeed in this. We have a wide variety of work. We have a lot of technology. And how we use it really does play well into going after this professional certification. So Chris has a certificate here. He got that in the mail. It took him about a month to get that. I just wanted to say, I'm really proud of Chris. I think it's a great achievement personally, professionally. And it's a lot of work, and I think it's great.
Chris, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. But now, you have to get so many hours to keep that certificate valid then?
Correct. So there's an ongoing recertification process. It's a three-year cycle. So if you're not, you know, if, if you just quit, if you don't attend anything, you will lose that. It's, you, you actually have to be active to keep that membership, membership, to keep that certification going. If you, if you were grandfathered in ten years ago and got it, you would still have to be doing those, that upkeep in your education, attending those seminars, going to state events or conferences to, to keep sharp, really. I mean, if you're not doing that stuff, you lose your edge, and especially in this domain, there's a lot.
So the, whatever the closed book test or the test that you take, is that at an independent place?
Yes, they have, they do it at the PSI, the testing.
PSI Valley View?
Yep.
Or Mepherston, I mean?
Yep.
Is that where you did it?
Yep.
Was that a hundred questions?
It was a hundred and eighty questions.
Really?
Four hours long. You got, you got a lot at four hours.
A lot at four hours.
And I think I took three of them.
Well, then you can go back through your deal, but you can't take anything with you?
No, it's, it's totally closed.
But you have to get eighty percent or better?
It was, it's a pass fail. That's the thing. There's a hundred and eighty questions, but only, only like a hundred of them are graded. So you don't know which ones are graded, which ones are. So you're playing that mind game the whole time, like, oh, it's just a lot of different things.
We don't?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully you don't have to take it again, so.
Oh, that's, that's what I'm glad. They don't have to.
Well, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate you looking, working for the county and trying to get yourself, you know, better equipped with the tools and stuff.
This is a field that has, probably has a lot of upgrades, updates, technology changes. I would imagine you're just gonna have to always keep up, keep on top of all of that. Last week, you showed your good side with what you brought to the Crescent Ski Hills.
Yeah.
That was really amazing, what you guys done. Really helped us look at our future. So thanks for that.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, for being his study buddy through the process. It takes a mentor like that. You guys make a great team.
Thanks for bringing up, or bringing that all up here, too. It's good to know. Appreciate all those comments.
Jamie, are there any certifications that you have for Stephen?
No.
So he's up to, are there any certifications that need to work on getting, you or Chris?
That's, this is the only professional certification available in the GIS industry. So that's, there are, you can earn certificates through college courses. So you don't have to have a degree in geography. You can have a degree in environmental science and get a certificate in GIS. So a lot of people do have that kind of certificate, but that's more in the education realm on the professional side of things. This is what we've got.
Well done towards you.
Thank you.
You can start handing those little projects I give you off to Chris.
You've done great work.
You got that email out forward, did you?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. Discussion and/or decision to approve an authorized board to sign lease renewal with the city of Avoca and Newtown Avoca Historical Society for the Avoca Courthouse.
So moved.
Rhonda, Rhonda Hope couldn't be with us today, but she wanted to make sure we got this on the agenda.
Second.
We all.
Good job out there.
We all know the value of that facility and utilizing it as much as possible. And I know that Lee's out there quite a bit, Maria, you've got people on site now, and it's just a good use of materials.
The sheriff stop out there.
That's right.
Oh, and the recorder does, too. The recorder's out there.
Kristen, do you have a chance to look this over?
Just briefly, in the back.
Can I just run a couple things by you?
Yeah, sure.
You know, when it, this, this is probably a canned lease that they pulled from somewhere. And, you know, we've, we've approved it for years and years and years and years. But the evidence, or events of default, did you read that?
You said the events of default?
Yeah.
Yes.
Failure to pay rent when due, fail, failure to observe or perform any duties, abandoned none of the premises. If we don't use the building for fifteen consecutive days. Do we need that in there?
We don't need it in there, but it is just the standard verbiage for a short lease. It looks like this is either the Iowa bar form or very similar to the Iowa bar form.
Okay. Maybe that's something we need to discuss for two years. Okay. I mean, it even talks about us going bankrupt, which.
The entered verbiage.
Okay.
I think it's important to have that out of Avoca. People like that out there.
They use that facility too, is that correct? Yeah.
They were sending someone out there every once in a while, weren't they?
That's where I think.
Yes.
Well, Darlene used to live out there.
All right, so we have a motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve the lease renewal. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development. Discussion and/or decision to authorize Board Chair to sign license to occupy for city right-of-way concerning public health facility. Morning, Matt.
Morning. So you have in your packet the license to occupy the city right-of-way. On, and, and page four of that gives you a diagram of what we're referring to in this area on the corner of Fifth Avenue and Pearl Street, where the training room sits. As you exit from that training room to the north, right out there by the corner, the elevations, when a stoop got poured, it got brought to the attention of like, we went zero lot line on the building to make sure that we maintained a historical look to it. The stoop is out there to make sure that any frost heaving or things like that, that the door doesn't jam. And that's when it kind of got brought to everybody's attention that we were gonna end up having to slope the sidewalk up and slope it back down. And to have that there, to make sure that we can maintain that door there. So I went over and talked to Matt Cox of the city, and they did have this license to occupy. He says, we do have a license to occupy the right-of-way. And so I sent him the diagrams over, and in return, he sent back this license for us to sign and agree for us to make sure that we can maintain that door out of the training room on two Fifth Avenue. And if you've been by there just recently, as of today, or even, you can see that that ramp has now been poured there.
I would make the motion to approve that. Second.
Motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen to approve license to occupy. Is there additional discussion?
Matt, one, one real quick question. Does that include the water valve for the fire department?
Yes. And the language in there, and as well as on the diagram, it does allow us to put two ball, balliards out there. We have a fire apparatus that sticks out of the side of the building. And my concern was if somebody wasn't paying attention, as most people walk down the sidewalk today with their cellphone in their hand, somebody's gonna run into that fire apparatus. So I did ask Matt at the same time, I said, can we put a couple of balliards out there just to keep people from hitting the fire apparatus? And they're allowing that as well in this right to occupy. So there will be a thickened portion of the concrete there, but the, it will be bolt-down style balliards that get put in place.
So if I understand this document correct, did you look at this, Chris?
Yeah.
So it can just be done by Cox and the city attorney, it doesn't go to the council?
That's correct.
Have they signed off on it already then?
No, they're waiting for us to sign it.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, that, that water valve for the fire department, that was a requirement, wasn't it?
Yeah, yes.
Any thoughts? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Pauls, you ahead today, Matt?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, next up, discussion and/or decision on compensation board. And we had a study session on September twenty-fourth with all of the elected officials. And we had a good discussion as far as whether we were going, since the state dissolved the compensation board effective July first, we have the option as the board to reinstate a compensation board or to assume those duties ourselves. So have you guys got a plan? What are your thoughts? How do we want to proceed with this? Do we want to reinstate the compensation board, or do we want to not have a compensation board? I think we need to have formal action, one way or the other.
We, as a board, help we have, I think we can do the job.
Second.
That was a motion?
Yeah.
You need a motion to do nothing? Is that what?
The motion was that the board's gonna do it.
Okay.
Assume the responsibilities of the compensation.
I think.
Based on the documents that you kept in the past, so we know what the information was that the comp board's conclusions.
Yeah, there's plenty of data out there.
Well, you should have it all over there.
Well, it can be easily produced by our HR team, anybody on this floor.
You can use, you can use the computer, too.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you're familiar with the computer, I mean, you could probably look it up yourself.
How would you like that to read? That the board will assume responsibilities?
And Matt will burst up the, a sample of a message that he sent to his representative, and we need to do the same with our two.
I thought we did that, right?
I don't think we have.
We talked about it that day, but.
My thought, we did it, sending them out in July, when it happened.
I, I think we were waiting for a path forward before we did, for sure. At least I didn't sign anything. Maybe Jeanette sent something out.
She wouldn't have sent out, was it?
Statement, yeah, I would thought, I was, I just thought, why would we wait? It's already been happened.
All right, so we have a motion by Shay and a second by Bell to assume the responsibilities for the Board of Supervisors to assume the responsibilities of the comp board.
I have previously held by the comp board.
There we go. Thanks, Melvin.
Was that your motion, Melvin?
No, I was trying to clarify what you were thinking.
The whole time I've been here, I don't think we've ever used the comp board's representation. If that's right, Melvin, never.
We had previously, do you?
Well, it's welcome.
Ryan, your motion?
Ten years.
How do you want it to read? Is that okay?
That's great.
All right.
It, it sure beats the board votes to do nothing.
Okay.
My wife had denied me that.
Well, that does clarify it for her, for record.
Yeah, what little experience I've seen of the, of the compensation board, it was, in my opinion, useless. Certainly not, not, I think we took into. They worked hard. Consideration, but. I think they stepped forward and done their job. Well, they, they did, but what they were recommending was totally out of my opinion, for what we could afford.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next up, discussion and/or decision on policy for coin distribution to retiring employees. And on September twenty-fourth, we took action to approve employee recognition miscellaneous expenditures. And I have written in a sentence that would go with this, it's not in your packet, but I think we can add this. And this all transpired last week when Lee Boss sent us out a message that her longtime employee, Chris Magnuson, was retiring. And the notice came out, too short notice for us to recognize Chris in the Board of Supervisors' room. And it would be, I, I think it would be appropriate for any longtime employee to be recognized on Tuesday morning by the board for their years of service. It's, our employees are valuable, and we need to recognize them. And so this is kind of twofold. One of them is to get in writing what our policy is for the coins. And by coin, I mean the, the county's seal or their, what do you call them, challenge coins?
Yes.
And we, we don't want hurt feelings. We don't want an employee who's been here for twenty-five years not to receive the same recognition that somebody was here for twenty-four years received. So to me, we've got to put this, we've got to put a policy in place. So last, on the September twenty-fourth, we made a change to the employee recognition miscellaneous expenditures. And I think we can just add a sentence to that that says, long-term county employees serving a minimum of, and I just suggested twenty-five years. This is for the board's discussion here. Will be presented a county commemorative coin upon retirement. And it's a reminder to us that when we're ordering cake for their retirement, oh, yes, we need to also include a coin or not include a coin. So.
Jenna? When, when someone retires, how soon do they have to notify either you or payroll or somebody?
I mean, when an employee's going to leave, we ask for anywhere from two weeks' notice to thirty days' notice. Some employees know six months in advance that they're leaving, others.
But there's nothing written that they have to do a two-week notice?
They are supposed to give a two-week notice.
Other than the policy?
Yes. And we do have an offboarding procedure in which an email goes out. So the department head puts in an IT ticket specific for this offboarding, and then it goes to the departments that need to know, such as IT, turn off their badges, HR and payroll. Those aren't always used. So if, if those are used, then we would have advanced notice of, of something like this.
We didn't get any notice on this, then?
HR had no idea until, until that email came out as well. That I can't speak for them. I'm not sure.
So they don't use the offboarding?
Some do and, and some don't. So we.
They don't?
I guess not. Yeah. Yeah, we, Heather and I try to run reports to see who in the last six months has termed, and then did we get the offboarding email? If not, we'd reach out to that department head to say, hey, did you know? Here's how you do it. Here's the link to it. We try to remind everyone. But I think the key, though, is too, is use that offboarding email as soon as you know they're gonna leave, not the day before or the day of. The day of doesn't help us. If, if for some reason something would get shut off and we needed to turn it back on, no problem. But it's better to have it early than to have it late. And so it's just constant education that we need to do and push out.
There's a nice book briefly about this, and I think that the board should fire on the emails or let their officials and department heads to make sure they're aware of that. And give us the proper notification so we can recognize those employees that have been with us for a long time.
Chris deserved that.
My only question on this, Jenna, if we're making a policy change, does it require a couple of meetings?
I think so. I mean, that's a board policy. You're adding something that's beneficial. I don't think anybody would argue with it. I mean, but you don't, you don't have that on the agenda today to approve that policy, do you?
Yes.
To approve the policy?
Yeah.
Okay. I feel you're fine. Yeah.
But, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's critical in the sense that not knowing what type of IT access they have, especially in that office, that there be some, and I mean, it's hard to believe that leave, that has been slipped by, I think, but those things are pretty important, no matter if it's for retirement or for any other reason they're leaving.
Yep, and no matter what office or department, yeah, very important to have stuff turned off in appropriate amount of time, yeah.
I would just say that I'm not so sure how this, her retirement came about. I'm not sure that Lee knew enough in advance to let us know earlier. So I think if, like I said, if we get that email out there, I think we can do it. Is it a policy of the board, Jenna, to review and change policies in a two-step process?
Well, I wouldn't say there's any policy that says that you have to do that. This policy that you're talking about right now is your policy. That's the Board of Supervisors' policy. Again, it's not employee handbook. It's not, it's not one department's. It's your policy. So I feel as though you can change it as you see. But, you know, you're having a public discussion about it. You're gonna vote.
They, they would have had to done some previous paperwork with IFRS when they have to do the retiring.
Yes. Well, if someone's gonna retire, IFRS eligible, someone might retire before they can start drawing their money. But yes, they would have had to fill out some paperwork, and then payroll has a section to complete as well.
They decide they're gonna retire tomorrow and have four weeks' vacation. They're still an employee for four weeks.
Right. They're still not.
Susan.
Oh, that's already included.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that was my thought.
How did you come up with the twenty-five?
I, I just guessed. I just drew a line in the sand. I mean, ten years would be good. I just threw it in there first.
I would say you're, you're in the ballpark, twenty or twenty-five years, probably.
Twenty years, a lot of service at a place. Really. See more people bounce around a lot. It seems we keep a lot of employees on for a long time. I wouldn't mind moving it to twenty years. What's your overall opinion?
I, I would say twenty years would be acceptable to me. I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I really am. I think twenty-five is giving you touch, touch long. Name of the game is that we get, we get to recognize them. That's the most important thing.
Right, right.
Okay. Did you want that, you want a motion for that? Brian, did you make a motion to approve that? For twenty years?
I didn't.
I'll make it.
Okay.
All right.
I'll, I'll second that.
Should my belt second my Wickman to approve the policy for the coin distribution to our retiring employees? And with that, I will also send out the email to the department heads and elected officials asking for them to notify us at the same time. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, update from board members on committee meetings from the past week. I attended the open house at the Centro Latino last Wednesday. They moved locations in the Omni Center. Got a lot more space in there, and they're serving a lot more people, so it's good use of that space. I also attended the fifth anniversary celebration of the Avenue Scholars at Southwest Iowa. That's a great program with some of the school districts where they're teaching trades and getting kids certified early on. And they've been doing it for five years, and they touched over forty-six students, I believe, which is tremendous. I attended the Trail Summit happy hour last Friday and the What Should Be Committee meeting. Um, I attended the Trail Summit Happy Hour last Friday and the What Should Be Committee meeting. And I ate pancakes and pulled pork over the weekend to celebrate Fire Prevention Week. Brian?
Where'd you do that?
McQuelland and Underwood.
Okay. Uh, went up to Hitchcock Nature Center for some a, a meeting. Then later that day went to the Mount Crescent meeting for their, um, big plan, we're working on that still. And then Thursday, done the Bike Trail Summit. And then went back to Ma- Mount Crescent for a, uh, unveiling of some stuff, one of the plans. Tweaking that as we go. And then all day went to the Trail Summit again on Friday and then the Happy Hour afterwards. Had a lot of people, that was a good deal. And then yesterday was at the VA. And we're here today.
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday, uh, well, both Brian and I were at the VA, uh, had an interesting meeting there. They, uh, uh, the, some of the chair's deputies were there, uh, presenting their, uh, their presentation on security cameras in that building. Uh, got very, very interesting. And we're, part of that is the courthouse, along with the VAs and, uh, facilities there are part of the collective, uh, security arrangements. So, uh, but, uh, yeah, good, good day.
They showed us all the different camera angles that throughout the county system.
Yeah.
I think in control and it, it was really quite a.
Yeah, they gave us a heads up too, uh, they're looking to replace some of those security cameras. The, the improvements in technology has greatly increased over time and, uh, looking to put some new cameras in certain areas just to, just to increase their, their observance. And we, and we noticed the difference, by the way.
Ken? Matt?
I think so, last.
Okay, now we move to public comment. Tom, did you sign up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Susan, I'm, I'm receiving, well, can I have a huge little question?
Yes.
Okay. Only if it's a softball. All right. Is there a standard fee to license a boat? Um, it depends on the length.
Well, the registration fee depends on the length and then, yeah, because it's a set fee, but they're staggered.
Okay, so if you, um, license a boat, a sixteen footer.
Yeah.
How much does a recorder's office get to keep for the county out of that registration? That's not soft.
Seven bucks.
Really?
Yeah.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, we'll get five for the registration portion and then two for a riding fee. Then we take the biggest hit is vital records where, when we do a marriage application at the counter, it takes us a long time to do it. And we get four dollars and the state gets thirty-one.
That was my next question. So on, on the, on the boat registration, if we get seven, what's the state?
Uh, six. Eight bucks. Oh, registration's pretty split on a renewal. But yeah, vital records, we'll take the biggest hit, DNR's pretty fair.
Good. Okay. Okay, thank Susan, that's all I wanted.
All right, I got a quick statement I gotta read.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now begins our public comment portion of the agenda in an effort to protect the privacy of individuals and reduce the potential broadcasting of defamatory and or confidential information. Our live broadcast will now end.